Good evening and welcome. This is the March 20th Special Meeting of the Northampton School Committee. I am Mayor Gina Louise Shara, and I will be presiding. This is a hybrid meeting, which is being held in person in the Northampton High School Library at 380 Elm Street and online on Zoom pursuant to the modification of the state's open meeting law for the pandemic. This meeting and all participating in person and on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. Annie, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shara?
Here.
Member Robbins?
Here.
Member Gacy?
Present.
Member Sergio Cox?
Present.
Member Stein?
Present.
Member Levy?
Present.
Member Miller?
Present.
Member Goldman?
Present.
Member Agnes?
Present.
And Member Dier?
Present.
Thank you, and Member Goldman is participating remotely on Zoom. This evening, we will be interviewing two candidates for Superintendent of the Northampton Public Schools. And first, our first interview is with Dr. Bonner, Portia Bonner, and we are awaiting her arrival in the room.
For some reason, my text to Liz is failing from here.
I'm calling.
If somebody please text her.
She went and is trying to.
She's not answering. You want me to go get her?
She was in another spot.
Where?
She wasn't there.
Is she in the gym or something?
Somebody just went to work.
Who? What you didn't have to.
We're going to use the rating scale at the top, right? That's not the other one that was Tom suggested? We're going to use the rating scale at the top? Okay.
And everybody knows to make a copy of the form to write on it, don't write on the actual form?
It's different on the computer.
Or are you?
I'm not going to, I'll mess it up. I'm not making a copy.
We're all hard copies.
You literally have a hard copy.
I literally have a copy. Keeping it separate.
Was somebody able to share the rubric with Kaia? I'll do it.
I'll do it. She, yeah, she talked about having had it, had access to it.
In her pocket.
Yeah. Okay, just come in. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi. Were any distractions in the school building? But Dr. Bonner's here. This is your first candidate of the evening, Dr. Portia Bonner. She'd like to go around the room and shake hands, if that's okay? Okay?
Liz, do you want to introduce yourself at the mic while your, while Dr. Bonner's meeting?
Oh. But of course. I'm Liz LaFond, and as you all know, I am Field Director with MAS C, and I've been sort of helping navigate the way through this search.
Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Bonner. Eileen Davis.
President. Pleasure to meet you.
You too.
Hi, I'm Holly Gacy. Nice to see you. You're so attractive.
Hi, Emily Davis. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Holly Gacy. I was in Lautre virtually today, and they all had lovely things to say about you.
Dr. Bonner, you're in good hands.
Dr. Bonner, we have one person on the screen as well.
Hi, Dr. Bonner.
Hello.
Do you want to introduce yourself, Member Goldman?
Yeah, I'm Kaia Goldman. I'm a member of the school committee. Please forgive me for not being there in person, but I'm really excited to be with you all this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
A pleasure to you.
Pleasure to meet you as well.
So, good evening, Dr. Bonner. We met earlier, but I'm Gina Louise Shara, Mayor of City of Northampton, and therefore the Chair of the School Committee. And thank you so much for joining us this evening and for your interest in serving as Superintendent of the Northampton Public Schools. We are very happy to welcome you and to spend time with you this evening. We will be asking a series of questions, and we will go around each school committee member, and I think we go around once or, oh, more than once. So, and if, if we may also ask follow-up questions if, if there's more information that we want to know to those questions. So, we have a lot to cover this evening, so if you are ready, I will jump in and start with the first question.
Absolutely, I am ready.
Oh, excellent, thank you. So, please explain why you were attracted to and left your two previous positions, and why you are interested in this position? So, why Northampton and why now?
Okay. Well, let me just pull this. So, first off, I'll start with East Haven, which was probably my last full-time position, and then I'll end up with Basra. So, in East Haven, I served that district for four years. It was a unique setting. I came into the district at a time where the Justice Department was actually investigating the Police Department for misconduct and some racial incidences that had occurred in the district. So, I came in where there was a little bit of dividedness and uncertainty in the district. And also, I was also drawn to East Haven because of its diversity, very similar demographics as Northampton. And it was just ripe and ready for receiving someone who could bring an innovative outlook for education and to kind of heal the community in terms of where they were. And so, with East Haven, I actually left there within four years. It was a split vote in terms of renewal of contract, and I decided not to pursue it the following year to ask for a renewal of contract. It was a shift of clientele on the school committee. And so, at that time, I do want to share in terms of a personal component to that. When I left East Haven, actually during my tenure in East Haven, I was actually caring for my parents, elderly parents. And so, during that transition, when I left East Haven, they both at that time were deceased. And so, it took me some time to really take care of the family's estate and to really kind of get myself together, because after caring for two parents and the loss, it did take a toll on me. But during that time, I had an opportunity to do some consulting work, and I actually worked on a book that I did author. And so, then I wanted to get back into education, because when, once you're an educator, you have a passion and love, and you just have to return back to your first love. So, I had an opportunity to serve as an interim person in Basra, Connecticut. Now, Basra is very unique. It is a small rural district of only one school. And the position itself was part-time, which means two days out of the week. And I came in, in the middle of the pandemic, so I was able to really assist the district to navigate the time through the pandemic and had some tough situations of whether we mask or unmask and bringing the community together and talking about vaccines and so on. And it was a district where lots of transition, had a lot of hiring at that time. Probably about 25% of their staff had to be rehired, and there were some really, really big positions that had to be filled. And so, I was able to really assist the district at that time in terms of doing those hires and also healing, healing the actual employees that worked in the district. There was a lot of, besides the pandemic, taking a toll on people. There was also kind of the morale was, was very low. And so, helping them in terms of transitioning into a better place, receiving a new principal, and getting their eyes back on the focus of their, of their vision and their mission and goals. So, I did leave Basra because it was a part-time position. I wanted a full-time position. And I'm, I'm still young. I have some years to give, and I really, really wanted a full-time position. So, I left Basra in August of this year, and I've been really pursuing, looking for a full-time position. Now, why Northampton? So, first of all, Northampton is in New England, so I can stay in New England for one. But Northampton is so similar to districts in which I've served. So, for instance, Hamden, when I was Assistant Superintendent there, it was a district that was going through transition. It, and what I mean transition, meaning that the demographics of the city was changing. And so, if you know anything about Hamden, it's the bedroom community to New Haven, and we had many, many families, professors from Yale, in which we serve. So, we had families that were very affluent, mixing with families that had low socioeconomic status. And so, the demographics was changing. And so, so the district really had a vision in terms of how do we address that now? Instead of being reactionary, let us prepare for the changes that's occurring. And so, we implemented many, many things, so it was a great work. And so, I find myself that Northampton is pretty much in a similar state. You are starting to change demographically. And so, I would be glad to help in that transition and help to make sure that we have things in place where we can continue with the academic rigor and still give opportunities to every child that's in the district. The other thing is that Northampton reminds me of my old stomping ground when I went to school in Skidmore. It really, really reminds me of Saratoga. The, the, the love for the arts, the community itself, very innovative, free-thinking. So, it's a place where I would feel that I could grow and thrive and to contribute to. And also, in terms of the schools, very student-centered. I like their approach in terms of giving students choices, in terms of their learning and their outcomes. And I find that Northampton is on the cusp of, of doing some great things.
Thank you. Meg. Sorry, Member Robbins, you're next.
Hello, I'm Meg Robbins, and I'm School Committee Ward One. And I have a question that has a few parts, and I'm happy to do it slowly and repeat any part of it. And the question is to talk about communications. So, describing the communication structure you execute in your current role or your previous roles. How you ensured clear, culturally informed, timely communication that effectively informed a diverse set of stakeholders? There's more. Can you give an example of a time when you needed to quickly and effectively communicate difficult news or information to all district stakeholders? And can you walk us through the steps you took to reach everyone? And I'm happy to go back through any part of that.
Okay. So, first of all, in, in every district that I've served, I somewhat have my own personal communication plan in terms of making sure that the district is transparent in terms of some of the things that we are doing, initiatives, making sure that our documents are consistent and follow a definite format so that parents are used to how we report, to use friendly language, not to talk down, but to use language that parents can understand. Educators have a tendency to speak in acronyms, so removing the acronyms and actually spelling out what we're talking about and what we're doing, sharing that kind of information. I know that the district already uses quite a few different tools in terms of the social media. You know, I've used Twitter. Matter of fact, I had to learn. My students taught me how to use that. But social media outlets are very, very crucial in terms of getting information out. And then also the websites. And the website for the district is really, although it's, it seemed to be an old thing that people don't look at, but people do look at the website. And so, the website is one way that we could communicate, not just to our, our caregivers and our students, but also to the community at large so that they can take a look at what's happening in the schools. In the session that I just had with the parents, they expressed that in terms of communication, they would like to see what's happening in other schools. And I think that sometimes we are in our own little silos, and we fail to share, but they want to know everything that's going on in the schools. And that's one way where we can have some positive branding for the district in terms of some of the wonderful things that are happening in the district. And so, the website should give that information out. And so, there's some ways that we can probably tweak that. And then, in terms of communication with, with, with school committee members, I usually, what I do is that I, I have a working relationship with the chair. And so, we usually touch base at least once a week in terms of anything that may be occurring in the district. The other thing is that I do, and I still do, I've done this in pretty much probably three districts, I do weekly updates, just kind of an email blast to school committee members to let them know some of the things that have happened, some good things, some things to celebrate, some things to be concerned about or think about, and just so that you have kind of a pulse in terms of what's happening in the district. So, those are some of the ways in which I communicate. And an example in terms of when there is a situation where you have to get information out immediately. I'll, I'll use an example, and actually I believe I shared this with, during the first interview. At East Haven, there was an incident where we had swatting, which the FBI uses, you know, that term to, where there's several calls into several schools in the district with a, with a potential scare that there's a bomb in the school. And we had an occurrence where our high school and our middle school, as well as one of the elementary schools, were contacted and called. And so, right away, this is something that, especially coming from Connecticut and having Sandy Hook reminding us, just, just the, the intensity of something like this happening. And so, the first and foremost is, you know, I have a team of people who are working with me, so usually the administrative assistant will contact school committee chair. I will call the chair, but the key is to get the police involved. So, you know, in terms of coming to help us out and also making and also making sure that if it's, if it's indeed a scare, that we need to evacuate the building. So there's multiple things that are happening at the same time. But we also have to get information out to our parents. And so some of the apps that we have is like Parent Square, where you can send either a robocall or a robotex in terms of, you know, the school is being evacuated. This is what's happening. We will update you at this time. You know, so that there's a constant updating of parents and reminding them to look at our protocols that we have for situations such as this. You know, if we have to continue to keep our students out, you know, you know where the pickup is going to be, you know, the time of pickup and so on. And we are following every protocol that needs to be followed and that the police are with us in terms of helping us through. Contacting the mayor, the chair, in terms of keeping her abreast in terms of what's happening. And at, at that particular time, our app, the chair actually came to one of the campuses. And I was on one of the campuses. So that there was, you know, moving parts that was occurring and constantly texting and getting things out and having the administrative assistant also. So it's, it's really very critical that all the parts know their roles and making sure that things are getting out. Once that was resolved and found out that, you know, again, it was swatting, so it was really a fake call, but they, but there was an actual situation somewhere else in town. So all, you know, it, it just drew the police out to the wrong areas while they were heading some, somewhere else. So after all of this is done and calm the students down and really kind of talk to the students in terms of what has happened, we get our email blast out or our texts to our parents and let them know what happens following up. And then there's also a general letter that we send out and a statement that we make on our website in terms of what has occurred. Usually things like this. And so in this case, the, the media was, of course, alerted. And so dealing with the media, having one voice speaking for that and, and, you know, in terms of, so that's not different, different statements being made, but that there's one straight statement. So if, and depending on what the situation is, either I'm the spokesperson or the school committee chair is the spokesperson. Or, in this case, the police department is the spokesperson. So that there's one message that is constantly getting out there. But it's important that when situations such as this occur in the district, that you follow up with your families, with your parents and let them know, you know, this was, this was a scare for us, but we had, we had our plan in place and we followed through. And we want to follow up with you in terms of what took place. That's the kind of communication that parents want to know. And, and with technologies, things can be timely. You know, so it's very, very important. Time is of the essence in situations such as this. And to follow up in terms of what the final outcome was. So that's just one of the examples that I can use in terms of the importance of communicating with our families.
I wonder if before we go on to the next question, if our timekeeper wants to just give a sense to the candidate of our timing.
Remember, in our first interview, we had a time. So we have 90 minutes today.
Okay.
We started 10 minutes late.
Okay.
So we will be aiming for 10 minutes after eight because of starting late. So right now, we have, you have about 50 minutes left.
Okay.
And we have 18 questions.
I get faster, trust me.
Thank you.
This is a budgeting question. What criteria and process do you use when developing the district budget proposal? And how do you envision the relationship between policymaking and the budget process? Whose input do you solicit in developing the budget? And could you share strategies you've used to successfully ensure equity in creating and implementing the budget?
Okay, so first of all, developing the budget, I bring in the principals and department heads, department chairs. That's how the, the budget is developed. I actually send out to them, I said, you know, here's the document to follow, here's the protocol. What I need for you to do is to look at your school improvement plan. Look at your goals and your needs. Look at your, look at your teachers. And then put a pulse out to your teachers in terms of their needs. So the development starts at the school level or in the department level. And so I then call them all in to have a meeting and have a conversation about their wishes. And I usually do that one-on-one because I don't like competitiveness in terms of the schools. And we really have a good conversation about the needs of the school in terms of, you know, are you making new requests? And why are those new requests being asked for? What's the justification? Can you show me the data to support what you are requesting? Once the budget is built, and of course, those conversations include the business manager. And also usually I have a rep from a school committee that's part of the, the finance sub, subcommittee, who are in these conversations. And we then build the budget and then present to the school committee. So that's the superintendent's budget. But then the school committee then has their say and it becomes the district budget. So that's, that's the part. So definitely very collaborative. I incorporate the input from the administrators. And in turn, the administrators get the input from their staff, from their teachers. So that's one way in terms of developing the budget itself. I've had experience in terms of presenting budgets to not only school committees, but also to town council. It just depends on the format in terms of this district and in terms of how you've done. And then I've sat on the sidelines when the business manager is presenting the budget and just have inputs so that I can share with, with the committee that's sitting in front in terms of how this is applying to our goals and our mission and vision. So in terms of policy, first of all, the budget itself is a policy document. And it tells the story in terms of what the district's priorities are in numbers. And so it really reflects your values, your priorities. So it's not just a document that tells you how to operate during the course of the year or, you know, the, the financial components. But it really does tell the story in terms of our focus, our goals, our priorities. And so when creating the budget, there are some things that we also have to consider. And so, for instance, all of our contractual obligations that we have with our staff has to be considered. Are we in compliance to fulfilling those obligations? And so the budget should, should show that in, in terms of our numbers. It should reflect that. And so I, I think I've, hopefully I've covered all of the components to that question in terms of being, being very clear in terms of the approach of the budget. I will share with you that I've had, I've managed budgets as large as 115 million to as small as seven in terms of Basra. And so it's, it's incredibly important to make sure that we monitor our spending. And it's, and normally what I do is I request certain reports during the course of the months. I'm sure that there's some reporting that we do to the school committee to keep your abreast in terms of, are we following the budget? Are we in a deficit? You know, or will there be a shortfall? Or will there be a plus to the other side of that? Also in terms of, are we being very creative in terms of how we use our grants? And so those are just some of the components in which, in terms of budgeting that I would consider.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Can I ask a really quick follow-up, very quickly? Can you just say a few words about how you ensure equity in the creation and implementation of budget?
Thank you, I knew there was another component. And so, well, part of that is that, that I ensure that I have input from all of the administrators. So that's one component. But then, you know, the conversation comes with, when I'm talking to administrators, that, you know, your goals are reflecting what you want to do in your schools. Are there, is there equity pieces in that? And so, and when I say that, meaning that if you are dealing with a population that needs extra resources, have you requested those extra resources? And are we providing those resources? So for instance, let's say that we have one particular elementary school that we see that the literacy scores are, are low, that students are underperforming. Well, the question is then, what are we doing to support those, those learners? Do we need to have a literacy coach on hand? Do we need to provide an after-school program? Do we need to look at class sizes in terms of, you know, should we split that elementary class in half so that there is more of a smaller setting where kids will get what they need? So the, and, or, you know, besides curriculum impacts and instructional strategies, should we provide more professional development? So those are the kinds of questions that I would have, that I would ask. And then the transparency. So sometimes parents want to see that, are you sure that you're giving the school everything you need? So I'll use an example in terms of New Bedford. We actually, once the, once the budget was completed, that we actually broke it down for each school and we gave it to the parents so they can see how the, the school committee is meeting the needs of that specific school with their goals. So that's another way to, to, to maintain that.
Okay, next is.
Yes.
Do you got it?
Hi, thank you. So my question is, they're all multi-part questions. So stop at any of us if you need us to repeat things. So what, this is a question about supervision. What experiences do you have in building a positive team culture in the administrative team? How have you utilized supervision to implement improvements in both administrator performance and school culture? And please provide specific examples of successfully mentoring employees to help them improve. And then, of course, how have you dealt with unsuccessful employee improvement plans?
Okay, so, okay, so first off, working with administrators and actually every district that I've served in, having that capacity to work with the principals, knowing that you have fairly new principals in this district. So some of the things that I've done, first of all, is to really look at team building is one. And when I say team building, it, it builds a sense of trust where we can trust one another and have a collegial, a collegial relationship where if we're having a problem in one building, I could call my principal across the way and, and have a conversation about, you know, how do I resolve this issue? So team building, some of the things that I would do is to have a retreat at the very beginning of the school year. And not only do we have conversations about the opening of the school year and preparation, but we do team building exercises where we have to get out of our comfort zone and we have to trust one another. So some of these things were horseback riding. And that was a twofold venture because we were also looking at using equestery treatment for some of our special needs students. And then we tried paddle boarding. You know, we've had games where we had obstacles where we had to work together to resolve an issue. So that built trust and a sense of trust. And it was really kind of a precursor to going into the year where we had certain protocols when we would meet that we would problem solve something. If someone was having an issue at a school, we would take that to be the problem and we would actually work it out with the individuals so that they can go back and implement. And so, and then also provided PLCs, professional learning communities, where we would choose a book that we would focus on during the course of the year. Some of the books that I have used, of course, is Carol Dweck's Mindset. We've used some of Malcolm Gladwell's books. We even used Daniel Pink's books. So there are some things, and they choose it in terms of what they want to focus on. But, and it's more so about how do you manage an organization for success? You know, having those kinds of conversations, building those internal relationships with the, the staff that are in your school. And so those are the kinds of supports I've, I have mentored and coached not only principals, but also assistant superintendents, directors and coaches and so on. So then the, the other piece too is that as superintendent, I usually evaluate the principals. And so the process that I use is where, again, bringing in your school improvement plan and having a conversation about the goals in which you are pursuing in that school year. And then talking about the pieces of evidence that supports that you're meeting those goals or you're at least progressing to meet those goals. And so the, the principal actually decides what that, those pieces of evidence will be and the data in which they will collect. And, and so we, we set this up as a goal-setting meeting at the beginning of the year. And then there's a mid-year check-in in terms of where we are. You know, what, what evidence have you collected? And then the year-end conversation, you know, you know, what are next steps? And so part of that too is that I always ask the administrators to have a professional, personal goal. So, you know, what are, what's the learning that you want to do? And hopefully that it supports some of the goals in which you're trying to achieve. So for instance, restorative practices is one thing that we find in pretty much everyone's school improvement plan. So what are, are you going to do to show or improve your learning in that? You know, what books will you be reading? What, what webinars will you be attending and so on? So those are some of the components in terms of working with administrators, building relationships and supervision. So the, the third part of that question is then dealing with employee issues that may come up where someone who may not be meeting successfully with their goals. And how do you discipline them? So in many of my experiences, I have had opportunities where I work with staff. And, and usually if it's at the teacher level, and I'll, and I'll do the teacher level more so, that if there's staff who are not meeting the goals and there's concerns and principals have brought their, their concerns to, to, to the superintendent level, then we talk about progressive discipline. It can't be just a one-shot thing, but it's something where we are supporting that individual wherever they may need support. And giving them a second chance in terms of having an opportunity to improve and what suggestions or supports that we've given them to improve. And, and then, you know, gauging it. And so giving them a timeframe. So if they have not met that improvement timeframe, then the next steps. So one example, I had a teacher who, tenured teacher, and really very close to retirement, probably, it was actually, she was really kind of paying us to work because she was in her 38th year or so. And so we found that she was having health challenges. And so she was not, her attendance was deplorable. And parents were really complaining. It was a very important grade where, you know, staff needed to be present. And so really having conversations with her in terms of where she, you know, where she is, how could we help? And working with the union in terms of, you know, here's a person who started her career, who was really a very effective teacher, but now is no longer effective. We're seeing that, we've seen the decline. We see that in her last evaluation and she has been on disciplinary action in terms of this year, but there's been no improvement. And so working with the union, we actually worked out an agreement in order for her. So instead of pushing her out, it was really kind of an agreement for retirement. And this, and it wasn't so challenging for, she really just didn't, she didn't have the counsel in terms of the fact that she could retire. This was something, a safety net for her. And so having those kinds of conversations where, you know, you really have to know your employees and see where they're, where they're at. I had another employee who was very, very effective. The kids loved him, parents loved him. He was renowned and known in the district. And he became a substance abuser. And so, you know, what do you do in terms of this where you have parents who just, you know, are advocating for this teacher, but the teacher needed help? And so, again, working with him and putting some, some, some help supports in place and putting some milestones in place in terms of, this is what needs to be done before you can return back to the district. And working with the union because it is, it becomes a contractual issue as well. So those are just some very brief, quickly, brief examples of dealing with employees and supervision. So please double-check to make sure I've answered every part of that question.
I think perhaps in the interest of time, I'll, I'll move on. There's, yeah, just details. No, I, I think it's good.
This is a curriculum question.
Okay.
And again, if you have questions about the multiple questions in the questions, please let me know.
Okay.
What has been your experience in implementing curricula, programs and offerings that center on anti-bias, anti-racist approach and that incorporate? That center on anti-bias, anti-racist approach and that incorporate hands-on, project-based learning? And that attracts and retains students?
Alright, so I will use an example from my work in Hamden, uh, in terms of, uh, curriculum and rollout. And by the way, that is my background. Uh, my, my doctorate is in curriculum and instruction. And so, um, when I was in Hamden, again, I spoke very briefly about, uh, the district was in transition in terms of the changing demographics. And so one of the, uh, initiatives that they put in place was to how to address equity in the district and looking at. Anti-bias and anti-racist, um, curriculum. And so you have to know that this was not in response to where we are right now as a nation, but this was back in, in two thousand and five. And so, um, we actually began, it was multiple steps. We began with courageous conversations. Worked with Glenn Singleton who actually did some work with us and, um, we had trainer of, trainer models where. We would have facilitators who would conduct courageous conversations, uh, with our staff. And, and in turn, staff would work with students, you know, and began, uh, having conversations, uh, you know, to be more empathetic. In terms of our differences. And along with that, we also contracted out with an organization called National Urban Alliance. And here is where probably the meat of our work came in, where we had facility, facilitators who came in district. Who worked with us and took a look at our curriculum, uh, and, uh, worked with us in terms of strategies. To incorporate, to differentiate our instruction, to bring in resources that were culturally responsive to our demographics. And so all of these pieces that were coming in, we started with a small cohort of, of, of teachers and trained them. So that they could become the experts in their building who can then train the teachers. We find that there's better buy-in from staff. When they're being trained by their own peers. And so we did this rollout and the other component to this was that we looked at the assessments that we were using and. So we, uh, incorporated, uh, an assessment that would give us both strengths and weaknesses for our students. And so that we could then navigate how we would utilize our curriculum. So, so the steps, this was a three-year commitment that we worked with this team. And so we had Plan PD, we worked with our, our, uh, with our, um, professional development. Council who helped us to plan out the plan of how we were going to roll things out, piloted, uh, many things. And then it was a full district rollout. And so what's important is that. Once you are doing something new with initiatives, that you do it slowly. You incorporate your teachers in some of the decision-making, uh, so, and then you pilot to see if it works. But before you choose anything, you need to look at, is it going to meet the needs of your vision and of the, the goals of your district? And you're not just trying something new because it's new, uh, or it's trending. You want something that's going to address. Your focus in district. And so that was a focus for us. This was something that we truly had bought in and we wanted to do. The other pieces too, at the other end, once this is implemented, you need to make sure that you have safeguards to sustain it. You know, check-ins, making sure that it's still effective, uh, having that data. That's why the assessment component was very, very important. So, so it's incredibly important to, again, it, it have buy-in from your, uh, from your staff. Do a slow rollout, not a full district rollout, justify why you're doing this. And the other component is that we talk about our teachers in the rollout, but we also must share with our caregivers in terms of what we're doing. And explain it, why we're doing it and to give them some supports of how they can be the continuation of the learning at home. So those are some things, uh, hopefully that gives an example of me rolling out something in district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Time check again.
Okay, so how, how, how many?
We're at seven twenty-six, we're going to eight-ten and we're only on question six.
So. And you realize that's question thirty, really.
Oh, we do. I will speed up.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
In not having thirty questions, we just combined them.
It's okay.
So this is also a curricular-based question. There's been a lot of discussion both in our district as well as others about the role of honors, embedded honors. Standards-based grading and advanced courses and considering issues of educational equity. How do you approach curricular decisions that center equity and ensure all students are appropriately challenged and engaged? And teachers are effectively supported and trained in meeting those needs? That's the first question. How have you supported administrators in navigating the complexity of implementing the rollout of all kinds of curricula? That may not be embraced by all of the faculty?
Okay, so that goes back to the example that I've used in terms of it's very important to have buy-in from, uh, your staff, from the teachers. Cause they're the very ones who have to implement it. And so, um. When you talk about the components of how to bring staff on board and doing new initiatives. Justification of the initiatives, as, as I pointed out. So this is kind of a, a repeat of some points. So your data is telling you that you need to make a change. And so how do you make that change? And how do you make that change to make sure that it's equitable? And so what's important is that, um, are we putting constraints or obstacles in place? For instance, you talked about honors and embedded honors and standard-based learning. So when we make or we implement these new initiatives. What, what, uh, obstacles have we now put in place? So for instance, if we want to increase. The enrollment of advanced placement courses of students of color, let's say. What supports have we put in place to get them there? And so I could use an example that, um, in East Haven to increase, uh, the enrollment of our advanced placement students. Particularly students of color, we actually tried to, well, we, we did, we piloted a pre-AP program at the middle school level. So it gave them, uh, resources and support so that when they entered into the, into the high school. That if they did want to indeed take an advanced placement course, that we built in supports that would help them to be able to. Really thrive in the course as opposed to feeling overwhelmed by it. And so, how to do, how to get the buy-in, that was, that was the other component in terms of moving staff that may not see the importance of this. So that begins to tell the story of why we need to do this, you know? The, the, the vision of the district is to provide equity throughout every level. It's, 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 it's systematic. It goes from the top all the way down. And we want to ensure that every child has the opportunity to be successful and provide access and opportunities of access. And so, again, it reviews any constraints that we may put in place. So are there, are there, um, stopgaps? That prevent students from taking advanced placement? Do they need to take a, a, a pre-course in order to take an advanced placement? Placement course? What have we done to provide that opportunity for them to do that and to be successful in that? So there are, are things to have conversations about and then to really talk to staff in terms of why this work is important. Why do we feel that, um, that we should provide this service? And, but on the other end, you still have to bring parents who expect rigor. Who expect, uh, uh, the, the high academic standards not to be. Downplayed, but yet you still maintain that rigor. So yes, you still maintain that rigor, but you're gonna have to build in some supports for every student to be. Uh, successful in that class. So there are some things that can be done. And that's lots of conversations with some of our staff who may feel that, uh, tracking is still something that we want to do. But no, in this district, the mission and the vision is that we are equitable in every stance of. Our, our, uh, our policies and our regulations and opportunities that we provide for our students.
I'm gonna ask just a really quick follow-up question, quickly. How have you supported English language learners to achieve excellence while being fully integrated into the general education classroom?
So what's really, really, very key is that, um, that. There should be inclusion in terms of they should already be into the regular, uh, general population. And that they're given opportunities where they can apply their language in real-life scenarios and situations. And so that comes with differentiation of instruction, which, uh, staff may need some retooling or, or some strategies that they can employ in their classroom. To ensure that students, you're still meeting the standards of the curriculum, but that you're doing, you may do something. Different in terms of how you might scaffold the learning. You may, uh, chunk the learning, but still the learning still occurs. And so that's just one, one way to do that. Okay? Okay.
What has you, been your experience supporting students during the ongoing pandemic? Tell us how you have addressed learning loss and increased mental health needs. Among students of differing backgrounds, including socioeconomic, ethnic, racial and sexual identity.
Okay, so I'll use the example of Basra. Um, so when students really fully came back to school and we actually. We had a hybrid model, but we brought every child back in probably, uh, by the March of that, that first year of, at the end of the pandemic. And so knowing that, uh, students were really very shaken. And so we used some of our ESAR money. To, um, incorporate some social work interns that were in the building. We kind of built up our, uh, support staff. And, uh, we had some behavioral specialists. And we also worked with our staff in terms of providing some professional development to, you know, be aware of the signs of some trauma. How to, how to de-escalate students. And so that's when our social emotional, uh, social emotional learning curriculum really kicked in. Some of the mindfulness and restorative practices that we were employing. Giving students strategy of how to de-escalate their behavior and kind of rethink, um, spaces for them to just kind of maybe journal. Then come back to class, you know, ready to learn. So there were some different strategies that we employed. Also, our support staff would have, uh, small group meetings with students who were really showing some agitation or some trauma. Uh, and working out some of those issues and concerns. The nice thing is that with Basra being such a small school, K through eight, well, pre-K through eight. The teachers literally knew every child in that building. So it wasn't just, that's my student, but it, every, it, it, they're all their students. You know, it was that kind of a community. So, um, it really did help in terms of that and we did some workshops with parents in terms of. You know, what are some signs that you may be seeing at home? We had some webinars. We brought in some, um, outside consultants also to help us. And so those were some of the things that we put in place. The learning components, again, with that, we had some after-school programs. We had a summer program. Where we really kind of targeted our students who we saw the learning loss that were not meeting the grade standards. And we really worked with those families and tried to get those students in so that when they came back in September, they were ready to go. We had the flexibility where if students were not ready, so for instance, if you're in second grade. And you missed some of the pieces that first grade should have offered, building that foundation, that teachers would swap or teach out. Whatever they needed to build that foundation. So we had that kind of flexibility. Now, did I fully answer that question? Okay.
Hi. Yes, you. Hi, Dr. Van Der. Okay, this question is about assessment and, uh, data-informed decision-making.
Okay.
For, uh, yeah, student achievement. How have you developed district-wide capacity to assess, analyze and monitor student performance? As well as use student performance results to prioritize the equitable use of resources, including money, technology, facilities. And human capital. Also, can you talk about a time when you used data to mitigate a current inequity?
Okay, so very quickly, um, in all of the districts where I served, especially as assistant superintendent, um, always implementing an accountability model. So when I was in Hamden, I brought, uh, data teams to the district, the same with East Haven. And when I mean data teams, we had a district data team. And each school had their data team. And there was a format in which we followed where the, where teachers would come together and really discuss. Students, they would pull out the, the targeted students who they needed to work with in terms of building, uh, on their weaknesses and. And so, and even in Basra, we, we called them child studies where they, the students who we were very, very concerned with, maybe attendance and, and had. Were not meeting the level in which they should achieve in terms of literacy. We would target them in terms of making sure that there was support, follow-up. Maybe in terms of when we were doing small groups in the classes, that we would target and focus on whatever skills that, that, that child would need. And so that all comes with, uh, revelation that we receive from the, the, the assessments that we do, the benchmark assessments. I know that currently, right now, the district is looking at, um, looking at some possible assessments, but in Basra, we used iReady. For both math and literacy. Uh, in East Haven, we use M-Class, uh, the M-Class suite and we also use Star. And so these were assessments that we would set, uh, our, our, our baseline assessment, our mid-year and our end-of-year and take a look at the growth. Now, at the district level, in terms of the superintendent's level, I would look at overall in terms of the performance in terms of the schools. But at the school level, they were so detailed in terms of actually working with the students who were falling behind and working with them. And doing whatever interventions were, were necessary. At the district level, there would be check-ins in terms of, you know, where are you in terms of progressing and are you moving, uh, the needle? In terms of our students meeting the benchmarks that we have set for them for the school year. Uh, in terms of reporting this information out, school committee meetings, we would pick a school, uh, a, a month. Where we would just focus on them and talk a little bit about their performance and where they are, set the goals and see where they're, you know, how they're improving. What are some of the supports and resources that they put in place? So I am one who really uses data. That's that science background in me, very analytical. But I use it to support and to justify our needs. So if we were looking at, uh, investing in more literacy coaches, for, for instance, you know, what is the justification? Well, I can say that we're underperforming. Look at our MCAS scores, look at our in-district assessments. We need to really kind of target our students at, let's say, the elementary level and really, really focus in on literacy. So those are some, many of the different ways, uh, to use data. So an example of using data to mitigate a situation. That was inequitable. I've got many, but I'm gonna use a quick one. I will actually, uh, talk about. Let's see, the advanced placement course. When I was a teacher, uh, in an urban school setting in Waterbury. There were very few, uh, students of color taking advanced placement courses. This was noticeable. The data was there. I would bring the data to, it's like, you know, why, why is this? What is the case? Why, why, why not? Uh, also, there were very few females taking specifically advanced placement courses in the sciences. And so at that time, I used that data and I literally went to my department chair and said, I, I'm gonna advocate. I want, I want to, give me an opportunity to actually reach out to students. And get a small cohort and allow me to do advanced placement biology. And, uh, and to put whatever resources. And that was a year that the, the, the high school actually received a grant and received a grant not only for supports. For materials to start this program, uh, but it also, uh, provided some, um, offsetting of the cost of the assessments for our students. And so this is just one example of how I will use data to support and justify of trying something new. In, in, in the school setting. Done that on superintendent level as well, you know, in terms of justification of changing some things and saying, well, you know. This particular school is underperforming. I can say, uh, uh, New Bedford, for instance, we had some schools that were cited by the state that were underperforming in terms of special ed. So we put some special services and programs in those, in those schools and it was justified by looking at the data. And, uh, the school committee supported me in terms of, okay, so let's, let's try this, let's try this innovative approach. And we will monitor the data to see if it's effective. So that's just one way. Another way. Okay, so my time check.
Time check. We've got about thirty-five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, we're at only question number nine.
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna get better.
Halfway.
Okay.
Okay, my question on engagement, Dr. Bonner. How do you incorporate the perspectives of a wide variety of stakeholders into your decisions? And how do you communicate in ways that demonstrate the ways in which you've heard and incorporated those voices? Give examples of times that you have reached out to engage those who feel most marginalized and excluded.
Wow, so I've been, I'm very collaborative in my work. And so I really do capitalize on the talents of those who surround me, you know, from, from central office staff, as well as the principals and the, and the teachers and the caregivers. And so I'll use a very quick example. In New Bedford, when we were creating our strategic plan, we actually had conversations throughout the district. We had focus groups. And literally, a team of us worked together on a set of questions that we wanted to literally have conversations around. And we went into the neighborhoods, into the schools, where we invited community members, parents, and there was a set of students that we also utilized. We also invited post-secondary organizations and businesses, nonprofits. So they each had their say. And all the data that we collected from these conversations, we used that, we, here we go with triangulation. We used all that qualitative information to really pull out common themes that we saw as priorities. And we used that to drive our strategic plan. And before the strategic plan was approved, it was also left out open to the public to make comments on. And so these, these focus groups, they were also done in other languages. It wasn't just English, so invited groups that normally would not have a say or, or feel that their voice is not heard and to really have great conversations about some things. So that's just one way in terms of reaching specifically groups who are marginalized. And also, I had parent groups, you know, opportunities where I would go and speak with them, go into the neighborhoods. So I'm one who will get out and work with, with, with groups, community groups, and really have an opportunity to have conversations and not just listen, but take their advice. And they will see that in the decision-making that's made. I'm glad that this is a district that has school governance council, well, school councils. I, I've heard that the governance piece is taken out. When I was in New Bedford, made sure that every school had the training and had school council. So again, another avenue for community and caregivers to have a voice and a say. So it's important that we are a community that works together to see the vision of the schools. And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Bonner. Whoa, that was to give me a little alert, but I've already given you one, so.
Next.
Okay. So this is a question about collective bargaining.
Okay.
Please tell us about your experiences with collective bargaining on both the management and staff side of the table. How does the superintendent, in collaboration with the school committee, use the collective bargaining process to promote student achievement?
Okay, so very quickly, I've had experience working with the unions. In East Haven, there were nine. And I've had, when I say experience, not only do I interact with them, because usually I have an open-door policy. We have monthly meetings, so there's check-ins so that we can hopefully alleviate anything that might come to, to pass. But also negotiating contracts and at every level. So in terms of the administrators' contracts, usually those are one-on-one, personal, as well as the teacher contract with the support of school committee members, their committee. And then, and also usually we have a legal representation that assists us in terms of that process. I have had successful contracts, negotiations where we just have our normal mediator. There are some that did go to arbitration, but at the last minute before we opened the door to arbitration, we had a resolve. So there, there have been many instances. I have never had to sit under a walkout and pray that I never do. And so that's, has been my experience. There was another piece to that question.
On the student achievement.
About, how does the superintendent collaboration use collective bargaining to promote student achievement?
Okay, so, so normally the pieces with that, in terms of when we are talking about student achievement, we look at the ratio of teacher to student, so the enrollment, the class sizes. So that becomes a conversation. The, the workday schedule, having professional, professional development opportunities and the after-school programming and so on. So it comes to those kinds of conversations and embedding those pieces within the contract that there is an agreement with staff in terms of how we're going to work together to meet the needs of the students.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, back to me. Northampton students have shared one of their top concerns is bullying and the use of identity-based slurs, especially on buses. We'd like to hear what your short and long-term approach would be to addressing bias in the district and how you would support student agency and voice.
Okay, so short-term, so really addressing the issues that, that you're seeing in terms of slurs being on the buses or walls or so on. Immediately, of course, clean that up, but just begin to put slogans and signs on here that, that words could hurt. You know, positive sayings, things that, that we are a family, that we celebrate each other's differences. And, you know, those positive slogans that are around, that, that are speaking messages to, to children. And if you have the opportunity where you see the perpetrators who have done this, is that there is a restorative practice that you bring them in and really kind of have a conversation about what they have done. And usually this is facilitated by someone who's diversity, equity, inclusive, inclusively trained. And really take them to a point of, do you not understand how you've affected others? And not just the victim, the person who you're making the slur against, but you're also affecting others who have to visually see that and take that in. It's impacting more than just, just the group that you're targeting. Having those kinds of conversations. So it's really kind of the empathy talk and getting them to really see the other side, see through the lens of the person who you are inflicting pain on. And so those kinds of conversations. And then, you know, there are some schools that are so steeped into their practice of restorative, restorative practice that you could actually bring in a group of the peers that are mixed, that have the conversations and talk about how they felt when they saw that. And so in order to have those kind of conversations, you have to have someone who can facilitate so that it doesn't end up being worse. So that's short-term. Long-term is to really develop in the staff these restorative practices, which is something that you've mentioned in your, in your district plan, is, is a direction in which you want to go. But really giving teachers tools in, in terms of how to address this, how, how to address the slurs that may come out in the classroom, how to address those prejudices and, and to really, you know, not dismiss it, but to address it. And you have to have tools to do that. And sometimes that comes with the staff understanding where they are and their beliefs. So it becomes a really deep discussion, a lot of training. And, and sometimes it's best for that kind of training to have an outside facilitator and then trainer of trainers because it's so, so deep. Okay.
Thank you.
Member Robbins.
Okay.
Number twelve.
Okay.
Northampton has made an initial commitment to fully implementing restorative practices. So what's your experience with it? You've explained some of it. And how would you go about supporting district-wide implementation as a tool for cultural change? And if you feel you've answered this already fairly completely, just say so.
I, I can say, hopefully I've answered that, but I've had really tremendous amount of experience on that. As a matter of fact, even leaving Basra, we, we were, that was part of our professional development plan is to really reinitiate those practices. And there's some things that you've already incorporated in district that you can, you'll find that it's, that it's in alignment with those practices, so.
Is that me?
Yep.
Community relationships and culture.
Okay.
Can you share some examples of how you've gone about building relationships and healing deeply experienced divides? How have you encouraged a positive school and district culture that supports diverse groups of students, administrators, staff, and caregivers to join and stay in the district? Specifically, talk about how you've worked collaboratively with the school committee and school community to make this happen.
Okay, so I'm going to give a very quick example. I believe I shared this on my initial interview. When I was in New Bedford, there is a distinct group of people, Cape Verdeans, who really felt that they were marginalized, that their voices were not heard at the table, that their culture wasn't even seen in the schools. And so working with community groups and working with staff members and, and school community, school committee members, we worked on a project where we actually adopted two schools in Cape Verde, where two sister schools. And we traded communications at every level. So for instance, the elementary schools adopted a sister school there and the students would be pen pals, literally. They would email and, and talk about their life here and share about how is your life there? It was, it was really kind of a curriculum that we created, that the community created. And the, the middle school level, a little bit deeper in terms of actually working on a specific project. And we chose science project where they were measuring and giving data and sharing data and talking about their experiment and where they were and some of the changes. And so there was a little bit of more of the, the video chat and sharing. And then at the high school level, we actually partnered with Bridgewater University where we had a consortium where schools came, our schools came together. So it wasn't just New Bedford, because we did invite some neighboring schools. But we were on the campus and we had a symposium where we actually, and this is back in the day, video conference to schools in, in Cape Verde where you could see the people on the screen, have conversations. And the conversations were so deep, the kids learned his, history that they had never heard. They talked about the diaspora. They talked about, you know, why the movement and, and returning back to, you know, to Cape Verde. So it was an exciting time. And so this was something that was birthed out of conversations that happened within the community and what could we do? And having staff involved and, and students. And we even had an, well, the exchange where we sent staff there to actually visit the schools and vice versa, staff from there came there and shared and looked at the PD. And, and it was such a, a eye-opening experience, but it, it really, the, the Cape Verdean population were so proud of this and, and felt valued and felt that they were contributing. And it was really embedded in the curriculum. So just again, an approach of how to, to bring in a group that has been marginalized and how to work with the community. And, and this was a project that it wasn't just the schools, it was a community project. And a global one at that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So this question is about special education.
Okay.
What is your experience with the inclusion model? And how have your previous decisions and actions demonstrated support of special education administrators in delivering robust and dynamic programming that engages learners of all abilities, models consistent expectations, ensures compliance with laws and regulations, and balances special education expenditures against both available revenues and district goals?
Okay, so in that, in that question, the key is that the inclusion model that I strongly support, it, it's, could be expensive, but you actually already have the clientele, I hear, in district, is that I am a strong component about collaborative teaching, co-teaching. And specifically in the areas of ELA and mathematics. And this is one way where the teacher can be, again, flexible in terms of differentiating instruction, breaking it down, small groups, being able to work in different stations and so on, and, and still give the rigor and the, and the meat of the curriculum. And so that's incredibly important. Teachers need that support, you know, teachers need the support. And then also, taking a look at the district in terms of making sure that we are in compliance with the laws, working with the director of special, special ed, is, is taking a look at what our policies have been and our programs. And I know that they shared, this morning I had a great conversation with the director and he shared that there was a change and a shift in the programs in which, in, in the way that the district is doing, doing things. So now it's, it's, it's an opportunity to, hopefully that there's been measures of that change from a baseline of, you know, are we, is this new model effective? And if it's, and is it working for our students? Is it fiscally feasible for us to maintain? You know, what can we do that's going to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students who have IEPs, being in compliance? And can we bring more students back in district that could be a cost savings, you know? Are, are we over-identifying? That's the other thing. Is there something, and usually the over-identification will come in areas of, of communication or reading. And so again, looking at our literacy program, is it meeting the needs? So there's, those, those are the kinds of conversations that we have and working with the collaborative, the regional collaborative that's in, in making sure that we're meeting those needs and that we are being fiscally responsible to not only our, all of our stakeholders, but also to our caregivers who's, who has invested their children with us to make sure that, that they have the same opportunities as every, every child does.
Fifteen minutes and three more questions.
All right. The last one will be easy.
That's right, I know that one.
I'm wondering if we should skip this one to give us time? Yeah, if there's no objections?
We actually have four more questions. Yeah. Are you skipping because you feel like it's been answered?
Yeah, I think it's been touched upon earlier.
I agree.
Oh, sure, right, okay. While effective administrators will certainly take time to get to know a community, listen to a wide array of stakeholders, and build a collaborative vision, given what you know today about the Northampton Public Schools, what is your vision for a highly engaged district and how you go about achieving that vision?
Okay, so right away, the vision is the forward-thinking, looking at what are we preparing our students for, for tomorrow? And so after all the conversations in the full day that I've had, the district right now needs stability. And so, and when I say that, meaning that there's a lot of new faces that need support and need structure. And structure meaning in the sense that, that we have, there's some common frameworks and forms that we have that are in place so that there's consistency throughout the district without, without principals losing their creativity and, and schools losing their identifiable culture, which is usually caused by the principal itself. And so that's, that's one piece. And then to really think about, if we indeed are vested in diversity, equity, and inclusion, if we indeed want to be a district that edifies equity across the board, then taking a look, reviewing our practices that we have in place and really going after what we want to, to do to show that we are true to our word in terms of equity. And so that would mean to review policies, our procedures, making sure that we give supports to our, to our staff to ensure that, really taking a look at even our documentations, are they biased? You know, are, are we using the wrong terminology, those kinds of pieces? So those are some things that would be in place. And then maintaining that student-centered instruction. What supports do we need to give teachers to be able to? What supports do we need to give teachers to be able to maintain that and to maintain student choice? Because that's part of allowing students to speak of their needs and their learning interests and to be able to thrive in that learning interest. So those are some of the areas. And it really is building upon where you are right now and taking it forward. But then also, being mindful that the world is global. And so taking a look at, how do we, take a look at the larger world? And how do we get students ready to be competitive in that larger world? You know, so those are some of the things that I would envision. And this is coming from the conversations that were just, that commenced today. But when I'm in district, that first 90 days, I will be gathering so much information that really, and then really kind of reporting back out to the school committees, this is what I've learned, this is what I'm seeing. And so for me personally, my action steps of trying to meet the needs of the district and put it, project it out to where it needs to be, looking at the district plan and making sure that we are obtaining those goals. It'll be time to renew that. And district plans are not strategic plans. Strategic plans are really the forward thinking, the long-term, where do you see this school district in five years, five to 10 years? So there's some thoughts there too. So my vision for the district is to continue where you are, but to really kind of give some stability to that and to maintain that rigor, that academic rigor and student centeredness. Okay.
I apologize, I thought that was a follow-up question. So I think it's important that you ask it. And even if she says that she answered it, is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No problem.
We're on my turn, right?
Well, we skipped because we thought it was a follow, I thought it was a follow.
We'll go to you next.
We'll go back.
Oh, I see.
We're going back to the general heading of special education. What has your experience been in implementing social and emotional learning district-wide?
Okay, so that'll be very, very quick. I did touch upon that in terms of the restorative practices and responsive teaching. But in terms of social emotional learning curriculum that we've employed across the district, so at the elementary level, we use something as called second step and mindfulness. And then for our middle school and our high school level, oh, also PBIS, sorry. PBIS, PBIS at the middle school level. But at the high school level and middle school level, we would embed some of our things within the content, the curriculum content. So specifically in the areas of ELA and social studies, you know, talking about topics that, you know, where students can give their stance and their perspective and having those kinds of conversations and starting to look through other lens in terms of how you respond to some scenarios that may be given to you. So those things are kind of embedded in the curriculum where students have an opportunity to express themselves. And then of course, in the arts, another way to express themselves. And so those are some of those pieces. And then strategies for students to de-escalate where they are and how to communicate with others when, you know, to control their emotions and so on. So that comes into those conversations around whatever scenario that's given. Okay.
Okay, I'll try to say this quickly. This is regarding collaborating with the school committee.
Okay.
So what are your strategies for fostering a positive relationship and communicating with the school committee? How do you understand the superintendent's role in contributing to positive relationship between the school committee and community? And the school committee and administrative leadership team? And how do you engage school committee members, both incoming and existing, to understand and navigate the balance in the relationship and roles between the superintendent and the school committee?
So I just want to say, my dissertation defense was easier than that question. So all joking aside. So it's really, the whole tenue of that question is all about relationships. And so in terms of the school committee level, really building that trusting relationship. And normally when I enter a district, I really have a retreat with the school committee members where we set our ground rules in terms of how do you want to be communicated? What do you want to know? And clarifying each other's roles. And so that's very, very critical. And it's not just a one-shot retreat. Usually it's done every year because each year, you know, you may have new needs, new thoughts. And we always improve year by year. And so that's one piece. And then as a new person coming into the district, my resource and source is going to be the school committee. So I would be relying on you to tell me where not to step or to beware or, you know, who are key supporters of the school community, you know? And so as a superintendent, I'm one who's very transparent, but I'm also one who's very visible. I attend many, many things and not only just at the schools, but at the community. So I become the face of the district. And so to have those kinds of interactions with others and always having our values and goals being demonstrated in the conversations that I have in terms of the school district and where we are going, what projection or trajectory that we are going. And so the same with community members. You know, it's important for me to attend community events, to be out there and to really speak highly of the schools. It's a part of marketing, a part of branding. And spending time with those organizations and building on the partnerships that are currently already established in district and strengthening those partnerships and even getting more partnerships. So I already know about the Education Foundation and some other partnerships that you may have already in district, but really strengthening those relationships. And to know that it's not one-sided, that we're always wanting something from them, but that we give something back, that, you know, that we hear you and we hear your voice and we see some of your concerns. And so we're going to adjust to make sure that we meet those concerns. So I hope I've caught every avenue of, when I said community, that also includes caregivers. So I do like to hang out at PTOs just to find out what's up. So hopefully I've answered the complete part of that question. And is it eight, 10?
Well done.
Thank you.
That brings us to member Goldman with.
Oh.
Dr. Benner, I'm just wondering if you have any questions for us?
Well, very briefly, in the time that's maybe allotted, it's really about your expectations of your next superintendent. What are your expectations?
I feel like member Levy or any of the other members who worked on the criteria the most, maybe could summarize some of what we put in there.
Sure, okay. Try and summarize briefly. I just want to clarify what time, we did start 10 minutes late. So we can go.
It's exactly.
Okay, great, we're good. Basically, all the things that we just asked you about, we want the superintendent to do them all brilliantly. But we also, I think we recognize that there is, as you mentioned, a real need for growth, for healing, to bring folks together. And so I think as we talked about, thinking about the questions we wanted to ask based on what we're looking for. We're looking for somebody who is a very clear and proactive communicator. And in that communication, somebody who's able to connect with a very diverse group of stakeholders in the community. Somebody who can really bring leadership and vision when it comes to budget. Somebody who can really, as you mentioned, be not only data-driven but goal-oriented while also understanding some very challenging budgetary constraints, allowing us to be creative and meet our needs while also working with the budget we've got. Somebody who's a very effective supervisor, who can really thoughtfully both improve morale but also hold folks accountable in ways that will move us forward and again, bring folks together. Somebody who can really empower our administrators to collaboratively plan, adapt, and implement robust, engaging curricula that will really, I don't know if I'm going to put it bluntly, allow us to compete with charter schools, allow us to attract and retain the students and families of our area. There's just a few more here. Somebody who can really effectively work with and support our union. I think one of the things that a lot of us join the school committee to do is to ensure that there's a positive relationship and that we're really working together towards our common goals as opposed to being adversarial. And so building relationships and being goal-driven in those relationships as well. Somebody who can center equity in all that we're doing and not just bring an anti-bias, anti-racist approach, but somebody who also can really help us think intentionally about the historical and current marginalization that is present in our policies and in our practices to really bring us to that equitable practices level while also building relationships, supporting special education, and having, being a visionary. So, and then help keep us in line. So all of those things is what we're looking for. How did, what do you want to add?
That's a cape.
Nicely done.
It's a really good cape.
Thank you.
Yes, cape.
Thank you. Wow, thank you. So I have learned a great deal on just this journey for today. And it is definitely a district that is very supportive of their children and wants to see the best. And I feel that you have a staff, which I heard all day, a very, very strong staff, that is ready. And it's time, you know, after the pandemic and now with all the turnovers, that they really are still in the midst of healing and trying to settle themselves in the new season that we're in and looking for someone who can give them a little bit of security and safety and stability and, you know, and support and to be a shield for them, for the targets that may come. So I want to thank you so much for this opportunity. I know that you have a hard choice. And, but just to get to this point, I am grateful. And it's been a really, I have to say, it's been a wonderful day. I really do appreciate being in the district. And again, I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've built in a 15-minute break. Okay, okay, so we are going to recess for, okay. We're going to recess for 15 minutes before we have our next interview. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. I'm in school committee. Tara, do you want to shake hands or do you?
Whatever is acceptable to you guys. I am a handshaker, but I understand with COVID, I won't shake hands if you don't want to shake hands.
Come on over.
How would that work? If you don't want to shake hands, you can fist bump. Tara, Tara, nice to meet you. Remember saying, "Nice to meet you"?
Hi, I'm Mark Miller.
Nice to meet you.
I know, I remember you. I was just like, I couldn't see it clearly though.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Agnes, Mrs. Agnes.
Hi, I'm Louie.
Mayor. Emily, nice to meet you.
Mike.
Mike, nice to meet you. Nice, nice to meet you.
Now, Dr. Tiller, it's getting late. You don't have time to shake hands with all students, but I'd love to.
I saw her earlier. I forgot. Did you cheer me on? I just want to make sure that, you know, when this is being recorded, I look 10 pounds younger. This is member Goldman who's on Zoom.
Hello.
Good evening. That's going to be, I will try and do my best to turn and face.
You don't have to because actually the camera that I'm looking at is right in front of you, like the camera that, I see, yeah. And I'm going to keep my camera off mostly, but I am, I am here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Tiller. Thank you for being here. I'm, as you know, Louie Shara. I'm the mayor of the city of Northampton and so I'm the chair of the school committee. Thank you so much for joining us for this evening and for your interest in serving as superintendent of the Northampton Public Schools District. We are very happy to welcome you and to spend time with you this evening. We will be asking you a series of questions. You have 90 minutes. We have quite a few questions. And each school committee member will go in order and ask their questions and we go back around almost all the way through us again. We may ask some follow-up questions if we want to know more about one of your answers. So, as we have a lot to cover, if you don't mind, I will jump right in and get started. Okay? You ready?
I'm ready.
Thank you. Please explain why you were attracted to and left your two previous positions and why you were interested in this position. So, why Northampton and why now?
So, I just want to go, for those of you that know, you've been able to see my resume. So, for those of you that are tuning in, they have not seen my resume. So, if I just go through my resume really quickly, that will answer both of your questions. Well, actually, three parts of your question. I have been a teacher, a math teacher. I've been a vocational teacher. I've taught in alternative school. I've taught in an inner-city school. I was an assistant principal. And I was an assistant principal because I was a highly effective math teacher in eighth grade. So, my principal selected me to be a assistant principal to make sure that everybody taught like I did, which I had no clue, everybody didn't. So, I used data and we worked on teachers. I was then promoted to a district math coordinator. So, I worked with K through 12 math teachers. And the reason is because my principal was then the director of schools. And his theory was fix those math scores. Great guidance. And I had, you know, 15 schools and 9,000 students. So, we started an instructional coaching program. So, I worked with the instructional coaches and was in that role for a period of three years, I believe. And so then, when I left Dixon Middle School, which was the school that I taught at, it had 1,200 students in grades six through eight. It was one of the highest-performing middle schools in the state. And when I left, we were like number one in the LA and number two in math and top 10 in social sciences. When I went to be a math coordinator, the school kind of dropped. And so, your levels are different. A level five in our state is like the highest. Sorry. Glad it wasn't mine. I kind of checked again. So, a level five in Tennessee is the highest. So, that school had gone to a level one. So, when that school went to a level one, my director of schools put me back in as principal to be a change agent, to really straighten out Dixon Middle School. And we went back to a level three. Once I was the principal of Dixon Middle School, an opportunity presented itself across the state of Tennessee as a regional data analyst. And I thought, that's a great fit for me because I'm really good with data, I'm really good with representing data, and I'm really good at teaching people about data. And so, I went and was the regional data analyst and I absolutely hated that position. I hated that position because there was very little flexibility on, I was working with 15 districts, but I really honestly couldn't work with them to give them honest feedback. So, I felt like I was being stifled. When I left that position, an opportunity presented itself at Chatham County. Chatham County has 13 schools and when I started, 6,500 students. And they offered me the opportunity to be the chief academic officer, which was so exciting for me because I was going to be working with the entire district, all of the principals, all of the schools, instruction. And so, I did that for five years. And when I started there, Chatham County was a level one. Keep in mind, level one in Tennessee means the bottom. And when I left the chief academic officer position, we were a level four. I didn't leave the chief academic officer position because I wanted to. It happened because my new superintendent had the same skill set. I didn't leave the chief academic officer position because I wanted to. It happened because my new superintendent had the same skill set as me. She was a strong instructional leader. So, one night, we're at a board meeting, which is the school committee meeting, and we are talking about the budget. And the budget that was presented to the school committee was upside down by over a million dollars. Overrepresentation of revenues, underrepresentation of expenditures, plus an insurance issue. So, during the course of that meeting, my director looks at me and the chairman looks at me, and he goes, hey, you and Dan, go to the next room and figure this out. I had zero clue. I was really good in math, and I knew enough about the budget to be dangerous. So, I did like Matt Damon and On the Martian. I didn't science it, but I mathed it. I did math, math, math for about 20 minutes. And I came back in to the, to present a solution to the Board of Education and the school committee and the director of schools, and it worked. And from that point forward, they felt as if I knew more about the budget, and now I was going to be the chief financial and operations officer for the Chatham County School District. And so, I worked my way through that position over the next six months, learning everything I could. And keep in mind, my undergraduate is in finance and business. So, I really didn't set out to be a teacher. So, I had the financial understanding of the budget, but our budget was a disaster. And I had to learn about every single expenditure line item by line item, program by program, student by student, school by school. And during the first year of being a chief financial officer, I saved the district $2 million by renegotiating every contract and looking at every single expense and resource. So, I've been very successful as the chief financial and operations officer, both with capital projects and our fund balance. When I started, we had $1.8 million in this fund balance, and now we have $14.6 million in our fund balance. So, I've been able to execute, well, our financial team has been able to execute an efficient budget for the last five years, and we are in very good standing financially. So, now, last question, why Northampton? Why now? I'm originally from New York, born and raised in New York, born and raised in Orange County. My sister lives two hours from here. I chose Northampton because Northampton has a very progressive, very progressive community. It's a city, not a town, I've learned today. And I want to be stretched by the diversity, both on the LGBTQ community, as well as the diversity with students, as well as with just the community as a whole. So, I'm looking to come here. And I've only applied in a few school there. I am choosing Northampton. Like, you're interviewing me, I'm interviewing you.
Thank you. Robbins.
So, this is about communication. And the question is, could you please describe the structure for communication that you execute in your current role? How do you ensure clear, culturally informed, timely communication that effectively informs a diverse set of stakeholders? Additionally, can you give an example of a time when you needed to quickly and effectively communicate difficult news or information to all district stakeholders? And can you walk us through the steps you took to reach everyone?
Yes. So, I'm going to refer to my notes so I can completely answer your question.
There's a lot in there.
Yes. So, I have some bullet points. And I appreciate the questions in advance because these were intense questions. Intense. I really wanted to go to Rock Ages, but your questions stopped me from it. My communication looks differently as the chief operations and finance officer now. When I first started in the chief operations and finance officer position, it was, we only do purchase orders on Tuesday and Thursdays. We really just give it to you and you decide arbitrarily whether we're going to fund it or not. Well, when I took over, it was, what is going to be the return on investment for all the products that were coming through the purchase order system? And I will, I will approve purchase order system, purchase orders on a regular basis because we moved to an automated program. We took, we adopted Skyward Finance, and it's a really robust system. Like, right now, when I was sitting in that little room over there, I approved 16 purchase orders. And they're like, okay, thanks. I thought you were in Aruba. I said, that's Wednesday. There was, my communication style, back to my communication style. So, there was no process in place as far as the budget structure. There was no software in place as far as a financial accounting system. Contracts were not examined consistently. And so, now, being with the finance team, we, we had procedures and policies in place so that everybody was on the same page as to, this is the way we do business. It's not, this is the way we do business for that school or that supervisor. We do business the same way across the board. So, clear expectations, you know, deciding that first. Now, as far as quickly informing the district about a situation, I think I said this on the interview. We had an incident, the Sycamore Middle School, the shooting that never took place. And it was a horrible day. I got a call at 7:15, and I was the first point of contact that a student was apprehended at school with a nine-millimeter, with two clips, and a supposed hit list for the faculty and staff. So, as I'm driving to the school, which I'm 30 minutes away from the school because our county is 62 miles top to bottom, I am thinking through the process. One, I need to get with our media communications person and get an all-call out to parents. I need to let parents know first. It had to be a personalized call. It didn't have to be a post. You know, the post is second nature to social media and Instagram. But I wanted an all-call with a personal voice on there. I then nee- needed to inform the staff that everything was safe, and then the teachers, that was the support staff, that everybody was safe. And then, after everybody was notified, I needed to make sure that we were in contact with, obviously, the sheriff's office and our health and safety director and the news crew to, to put out public statements. But by doing that thought process and going through that, I also needed to think about, what is tomorrow going to look like at this school? What supports are we going to put in place at this school? And that required guidance counselors at school and additional guidance counselors at school, and possibly the presence of more SROs at the school to make students feel welcome. And also, if you choose not to send your, your, your kid to school tomorrow, we completely understand, and we will give that an admin day. But we learned a lot of, lot of good information because we did a debriefing after that. You know, there was what went right, what went wrong, what worked well. And we found out that we needed some extra windows in guidance counselor's office, offices. We needed a code word to send to our SRO when there was something that was serious or dangerous. Because he got the text, hey, I need help in your guidance, in the guidance room, but never put two and two together with a gun. And then, the most important thing, I think, was the guidance counselor's reaction to step across from her desk and sit by the student and have a conversation, and put her hand on his right hand and kind of sit and talk to him because most people are right-handed. And so, it was those little details and review and debriefing that I think were important. And then, what are we going to do? We're going to communicate that with our other guidance counselors. So, just some tips and tricks. Maybe not tricks, tips.
Member.
Oh, so this is on budgeting, one of your strengths. What criteria and process do you use when developing district budget proposals? And how do you envision the relationship between policymaking and the budget process? Whose input do you solicit in developing the budget? Could you share some strategies you've used successfully to ensure equity in creation and implementation of a budget?
So, our budgeting process may or may not be similar to yours, but I'll just speak to how we do it. We start the budgeting process early, like in December. I will say, here's the budget schedule. I set aside dates and times for all administrators, all department heads. And I, I send them out a form that says, I need you to think about your budget with respect to staff, student enrollment, custodial services, substitute services, lawn care, maintenance, food service. So that, this form goes out early, so that they have time to evaluate their school as a whole, needs versus wants. So, I meet with them then individually, either through teams or they come on site, and we talk about instructional supplies and materials. Who is it going to affect? How many students is it going to affect? Is that going to look the same across all three high schools? Did all three of our high schools want to venture in on this? Why? What's the need? What's the teacher-student ratio across the board? What's the student para ratio across the board? Some will request, I need another guidance counselor. Why? There's always that, give me the why before we implement it in the budget. And so, then I go through and I actually look at an evaluation of expenditures and actuals. Like, where are we standing right now in every line item? I present that list, it's a comprehensive list, to what we would consider our Board of Education, which is the school committee. And I say, this is what's being requested, and this is the why behind it. And then, our board says, well, these are our priorities. And what I do at that time is I really, really try to examine what we can handle in our 50 million general purpose budget, what we can put in maybe our federal budgets over here, or state grants. Maybe we can put that expense in our food service. So, I try to leverage all of our funding sources across the district before we present a final budget. And when I put, when I put together a budget for the Board of Education, the one thing I always fight for is teacher raises. And they are very much in support of cost of living wages, cost of living wages for teachers and all employees. So, we've been able to successfully implement raises for our staff since 2017. So, when I submit that version, that first version, it's usually about 30 pages long and 50 lines on every. But when I present it, it says, this line item, this is the amount, and the notes out to the side. And I walk the Board of Education through that budget, one item by one item by one item. And if they have any questions or concerns, I'll highlight it. I'll give them an answer if I don't know it, and I'll bring it back to them. But I've, in the last five years, it's safe to say that I've probably done six versions of every single budget for the entire district. And we have four funds, our general purpose, our capital projects, our food service, and our extended care. So, those three smaller budgets that are only about $10 million, they usually go by on the first version. But the other one, six.
The next question is about supervision. What experiences do you have in building a positive team culture in the administrative team? How have you utilized supervision to implement improvements in both administrator performance and school culture? And please provide specific examples of successfully mentoring employees to help them improve? And how have you dealt with unsuccessful employee improvement plans?
Okay. So, I'd start by saying this. When I went back to Dixon Middle School, I was, I was sent there on a mission to be a change agent. Most of the faculty and staff I had worked with, but I had to create a demand for high expectations and effective instructional practices and strategies based upon the data. They enjoyed, some of the teachers enjoyed having lower expectations. However, when I came in as an administrator, I had high expectations. We needed to move the needle. We needed to focus on student performance. So, when we looked at, at, at what that culture and climate was going to look like, it was going to look like effective instructional practices, co-planning, backwards design, formative assessments across the board. And keep in mind, Dixon Middle School had 1,200 students on two different campuses, three miles apart. So, I had three assistant principals and about 90 staff members. So, we really needed to be a cohesive team. Well, during that process of me going back, Tennessee developed the team rubric, the team evaluation rubric. So, I had to mentor teachers through, what does that rubric look like? What do we need to focus on? And that ongoing professional development to support that new evaluation system. So, that was the culture that changed. That was the observation that changed, and, and we really, we did an excellent job. Now, it's hard to have conversation when teachers are not effective. However, I did have one teacher that I, that I, I faced at Chita Middle, Dixon Middle School. I went in his class more than one time, often, because I always would go in classrooms. And I would almost consider it educational malpractice, that this particular teacher was not engaging the students, often sometimes ignoring these students. I would ask the students, what are you doing here? And they would go, I don't know. And so, I had clear conversations with them about what my expectations were for these students. And so, I gave a timeline. I said, I'll be back in your class by the end of the week. You know, this is what I expect to see. I go back in their class, because I'm all about inspect what you expect. I'm not going to set any expectations that I'm not going to inspect that's going on. So, I went back in his classroom and I saw no improvement. So, I called him in. I said, we're going to, we're going to develop a plan of improvement. And with that plan of improvement, you're going to do X, Y, and Z, and I'm going to do A, B, and C. And it's going to be an ongoing process. So, this started probably in August, and by beginning of November, zero change, zero change. And so, I went to my director's schools. This happened to be a tenured teacher. I went to my director's schools and I said, I have documented, I have discussed, I have a plan of action. I have worked with this teacher in the past, so I knew that this behavior was not just first time. I really want this teacher, he's, he's not in the best interest of students. So, let's either move him or, or put him in a position where he's not working with students. Those are two options. My director's school said, no. So, my director's school says, I can hire and fire, and I'm going to fire. And so, my director's schools placed this teacher, actually, a tenured teacher, fired him. It became very confrontational because this particular teacher brought litigation against the district. And it was upheld because of all of the documentation that I had had and that had previous had from administrators. So, I'm a big advocate of, let's not pass lemons around. Let's just not pass lemons around. But let's work with teachers to improve their practices and hold people accountable. We do it because the students deserve that. So, I hope that answers your question. How am I doing on time?
Time check. We started at 8:40, and we have 90 minutes. So, we're into, we've done 20 minutes. So, now we have 70 minutes left, and we're on question number.
Five.
Five. And we have 18.
You got it.
You got it. Okay.
This question is under the heading of curriculum. What has been your experience in implementing curricula, programs, and offerings that center an anti-bias and anti-racist approach, that incorporate hands-on, project-based learning, and that attract and retain students?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Member Stein for that brief training that you offered the other day. I thought it was, yes? Levy, Member Levy. I thought it was excellent. I really, I wish I could have saw the graphics that you were putting up, but I knew which ones you were. I really enjoyed that. So, you know, I interview a lot of people for a lot of different jobs, and I hate when somebody fumbles through an answer, and instead of acknowledging they have no experience with that, they try and come up with an answer. So, as a former ma- as a former golf coach, I had athletes that came on my team that had a bad swing, and it's very hard to correct a bad swing. To be honest with you, I have no swing. I am a clean slate on this. I have zero experience with this. However, as you can see, I will do research, and I'll look for best practices, and I will gain input on this topic. So, I would admit that I have no swing, but I have an unbiased approach, and I have no. So I would admit that I have no swing, but I have an unbiased approach and I have no preconceived notions.
This might emphasize other elements that you might be able to speak to.
Okay.
So I'm wondering, you know, if you have experience bringing in offerings such as world languages and the arts in elementary schools? Or really bringing in any sort of novel programs under like tight budgetary constraints? So like when you were working with the schools at various levels, were you able to introduce new, new offerings for the students?
I would say yes and no. Like there were two, two different schools. We had a elementary school that wanted to change from a typical elementary school to a fine arts magnet school. So we supported that implementation, what that was going to look like, and the instructional supplies and materials that would support that program. So that's one. We also had another elementary school that wanted STEM certification. So we supported that administrator as well as the programs, the instructional materials, the supplies that would be necessary to have a STEM focus at that elementary school. Thanks for the follow-up.
There's been a lot of discussion, both in our district as well as others, about the role of honors, embedded honors, standards-based grading, and advanced courses, and considering issues of educational equity. How do you, how do you approach curricular decisions that center equity and ensure all students are appropriately challenged and engaged? And teachers are effectively supported and trained in meeting those needs? And how have you supported administrators in navigating the complexity of implementing the rollout of all kinds of curricula that may not be embraced by all of the faculty?
Such a, I have a lot of notes on this one. So as, as a principal and even as an administrative chief academic officer, we have the ACT wall. Obviously, we want to recognize students for their ACT performance, similar to like an SAT performance. However, during the summer, we had our professional learning with our teachers. And we walked up to that wall and I asked the question, what students do you see? And most of them could clearly say, oh, I remember him. He's got a good family. He had great grades. He was a really good kid in class. And then I asked a, a follow-up question that says, who don't you see represented on that wall? And it was males, students of color, ELL students. They just didn't see them. And I asked, why? Like, why don't we see those students? And that began the conversation around honors, around accelerated math in middle school. You know, we used to use the performance of the state testing and that was our only guiding principle. And so we had to rethink our conversation is if people, if students want to be in honors classes, then we need to let them be in honors classes. If, if we have teacher input regarding their effort and their work habits, if the parents are committed to the, to the curriculum and the syllabus, and if they're, 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 they're willing to participate in that class, let's give them the opportunity. With that being said, it took a lot of training for the teachers because the teachers were used to, here's a score, you're in the class. So we needed to go over that and what honors programs looks like. What is the formative assessments look like? What does the instruction look like? Is it just faster? Because is it just quicker? Because that's, that's not an honors program. It needs to be deeper, like not a mile wide, but maybe eight, eight inches deep. As far as the incident with the faculty disagreeing on the curriculum, I have not had an incident on that. I think it's because we have done such a good job in the district I'm in. Like remember, I've been in this district 10 years. The previous district I was in 10 years. I plan on being in the next district, I'm hoping 10 years. We haven't had an issue with that. What we have had an issue with is parents questioning some of our dual enrollment classes and the content in which is covered in there. And that, it comes back to the conversation about, this is a college-level course. This is college content material. There may be sensitive contact, content. So we need to remind the parents that you signed off on the syllabus and that your child chose to take these dual enrollment courses.
Can I ask you a follow-up question?
Sure.
How have you supported English language learners to achieve excellence while being fully integrated into general education classes?
I think what we've done in our district is, is treated English language, ELL students, what we call them, similar to students with disabilities. They have a plan of action. They have an appropriate plan. We monitor the plan. Is the plan working? If not, let's, let's change or appropriately modify that plan so that students are successful.
And how do you assess whether it's working?
Individual, individual student. So if I'm expecting a student, so in Tennessee, there's performance level mastery. It's like exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, approaching, or below. So if we're anticipating that this student should be at approaching or meeting and they're not, then I think we need to figure out what supports need to be put in place so that that student does meet the expected anticipated outcome. It's no different than students with disabilities or students that need additional support. I want to know what the kids can do first.
Excuse me. What have you, has been your experience supporting students during the ongoing pandemic? Tell us how you have addressed learning loss and increased mental health needs among students of differing backgrounds, including socioeconomic, ethnic, racial, sexual identity, et cetera.
Et cetera. When the pandemic hit, it hit our district March 13th, 2020. However, I got a convers, I had a call with my sister. And I can remember exactly the date because it was my son's birthday, February 28th, 2020. And my sister's doctor is Dr. Jen Ashton. And she's, you know, on Good Morning America. So my sister calls me and she says, listen, you need to prepare. And I'm like, for what? This is February 28th. She goes, there's a virus going around and you need to be prepared as a school district. And I said, for real? Like, and she said, yes, for real. And I was like, well, it's Dr. Jen Ashton. I mean, God, I better take it, you know, for real. So that afternoon, I went to speak with the superintendent of schools. And at that point, we thought about, one, if we have to shut down, what is that going to look like? We didn't think we'd have to shut down for, you know, six months, nine months, a year. So we ordered, my entire finance department, we ordered laptops, printers, scanners, MiFi devices. We went on, we did Wi-Fi devices for students. We did access points. We did access points on buses, access points on the schools so that they would have Wi-Fi capability. We did virtual learning. We bought resources to provide virtual learning. We did a support system through our nutrition department where they had drive-through meals. We had drive-through distribution. We had backpacks. So as this pandemic's hitting, we are trying to provide as many support services as we can during the time when students weren't actively engaged in schools. And then we would pivot regarding the data. Like, so when we came back, we would have to pivot between virtual school and online school and asynchronous learning. So during the next year and a half, it was really just that balancing act. We even balanced between our departments because we wanted to spread out. We bought a lot of Plexiglas. We, we bought separation of desk. We tried to reinvent spaces. I had so many dumpsters or roll-offs all over the district to alleviate the junk that were in schools that weren't being utilized so we could create more spaces for people. So we really focused on ahead of time getting those, those, those needs. After or since the pandemic, we now have the Tennessee All-Corps Grant, which we applied for, which provides three-to-one ratio during the course day for students. And we are focused on ELA and math in all grades. We have Cheetah Achievers, which is an after-school program where we focus on ELA and math. We have a real desire to protect instructional time. And what that means is core content. Pep rallies, let's do those during specialist classes. I know specialist teachers don't want to hear that, but we're going to have our, you know, pep rallies during our specialist time. We are going to protect instructional time. We hired a social worker to work with families. We have a family engagement coordinator. And we have backpack programs. So I'm sure there's more that we could do, but that's what we did.
This, sorry, I, I just, I'm wondering if you can say what you mean by three-to-one ratio?
Three-to-one ratio?
Three-to-one from student to teacher?
Correct. Three students to one teacher during the course of the day.
Okay, Member Goldman.
Thank you. Hi. My question is about assessment and decision-making. How have you developed district-wide capacity to assess, analyze, and monitor student performance? As well as use student performance results to prioritize the equitable use of resources, including money, technology, facilities, and human capital? Please talk about a time when you use data to mitigate a current inequity.
So I wear many hats in the district. One of my other hats is that I am the data analyst for all accountability, all data, all student achievement, all growth data, graduation rate, ACT, chronic absenteeism. And it's just my ability to manipulate tons of data into a meaningful way. But we analyze data when the state testing data comes in. And what that looks like is I put together a presentation for every school so that I'm disaggregating the data from the district. What does it look like at the district? Then I'm taking it down to the school. Then I'm taking it down to the subject and grade. And then I'm taking it down to the teacher. And then I'm taking it down to the students. And so we evaluate all of our data. And then we look at what has, what schools are performing and what resources are we providing through our budget? So we do an examination, especially with our special education. Are we spending too much money? Are we spending not enough money? So, and what is our return on investment? Like what impact is this resource having? Now, when you talk about, you know, describe a, a time or data to mitigate a current inequity, we have annual measurable objectives by the state. And what that means is here's your target, you have to meet it. And if you don't meet it, we want to know why. And it's broken down to subgroups. So they look at all students, Black, Hispanic, and Native American students, students with disability, ELL students. And so we noticed that we had a real issue at one of our middle schools with our BHN population, our Black, Hispanic, and Native American. And so that particular school was placed by the state as called a focus school. So we needed to identify those students and track those students and follow those students individually to see what we, what we were providing and how is it effective? And could we move the needle on student achievement? What happened at that particular school is there was a lack of understanding of who was in that subgroup of students. Students that receive ELL services may not have been considered in the BHN category. And that's based on the state's data. So it was really identifying those students.
My turn. This is a question on engagement. How do you incorporate the perspectives of a wide variety of stakeholders into your decisions? And how do you communicate in ways that demonstrate the ways in which you've heard and incorporated those voices? Please also give examples of times you have reached out to engage those who feel most marginalized and excluded in your district.
Somebody, somebody once told me, people don't, people will not tear down what they've helped to build. I'm a builder. I build really good teams, but I build good teams because I have really good input. And I have a lot of honesty with those team members. And they talk about their strengths and they talk about how they could contribute. So, you know, we talk about collecting information. And really for, for, for collecting information, it's not only are we collecting information and surveying, gathering data, but we also have to organize it and then tell people, what are the results of this data? I think during the, the one meeting I just had, they were like, I'm over surveys. I'm over surveyed. I said, okay, well, I'll figure out a way, another way of getting stakeholder input. Like caregivers, parents, teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, kitchen staff, like the community. Like what are your goals? What do you see as North Hampton's objectives? You guys have four district goals. But as I spoke to people today, it's like, oh, well, there's these goals, but then there's also these other initiatives. I just clearly organize in that. You know, the most marginalized students that we have in our particular district are students with disabilities, are ELL, our career and technical education students, our Black, Hispanic, and Native American students. But I think it's important to have their voice. And like Levi's group, meeting with them the other day and Zara's group, it's important to have student voice when you're, when you're gathering information. It's important to know what students think at every level. And then lastly, you know, because we have students, we, we have students in our district that, that require additional needs and such. But we, we have an alternative school where it's a school choice and some kids are brought there for discipline. But we still want input on what that school is offering. Lastly, the marginalized. I'll just tell you a story and it's going to be a quick story. I had one particular student, I think it was the first student in our county, in Dixon County, that was a transgender student. And I wanted to make sure that I completely reached out to that family, to those teachers, to say, this is what she wants to be called. And we're going to make this happen. And it was a very touchy situation, you could imagine, in Tennessee in 2011. But I wanted the student to feel safe. I wanted the teachers to be aware of it. And I wanted to have a conference with the parents because it was not going to be tolerated that this student wasn't treated fairly.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
This is a question about collective bargaining practices. So please tell us about your experiences with collective bargaining on both the management and staff side of the table. How does the superintendent, in collaboration with the school committee, use the collective bargaining process to promote student achievement?
So very loaded question. So my experience with collective bargaining is currently, Cheetah County does not have a, an association or a union. And it's because that particular association didn't meet the guidelines that were acceptable in the state of Tennessee. Regardless if they had had an association or not, my philosophy has never changed. First of all, no matter what title I've held, I'm always going to be a teacher. I am always going to advocate for teachers. I am always going to advocate for support staff. What my role is as superintendent, or if you would choose me as a superintendent, is to make sure that I align what the union wants with what the school committee wants and be, like, we can agree. We can sit down and we can collectively have a conversation about what, what are things that you want? And what are things that you want? It doesn't have to be adversarial. I've always supported teachers. I've always felt like, you know, they're my first priority. But I will tell you one story. Again, Cheetah County did not have a voice. And I put my name on the line when I went before the county commission and I did a presentation at a funding authority asking for a 5% raise for all staff members. And this is a county that didn't budge. And so everybody knew I was going to be presenting that night. And it's like Tennessee gets cold. So it was middle of December, actually, middle of November. And they're on the lawn of the courthouse, listening to me give a presentation, serving hot chocolate out there because they believed that they deserved this raise. And I was willing to do it. I was willing to prepare and tell you why they deserved this raise. They hadn't had a raise in 10 years. And the surrounding counties were, were almost $6,000 more than us. And the surrounding counties were, were almost $6,000 more than us. And we were one of the wealthiest counties in Tennessee. And so, I, I advocated for that. The county commission approved that funding. And since then, since 2015, I've been able to actively, uh, provide a raise and/or a bonus since 2015. But I don't think working with the union should be adversarial. It's constant communication, listening.
North Hampton students have shared one of their top concerns is bullying and the use of identity-based slurs, especially on buses. We'd like to hear what your short and long-term approach would be to addressing, addressing bias in the district? And how you would support student agency and voice?
I think the short term is, you see something, you say something. Empower students. Empower, empower students to advocate for themselves in the school community. You know, everybody in this room has probably experienced a bully. And the good news is, there's probably more of us than them. You know, you sit around your table at home with your kids, at least I did with my two kids, and, and you have that conversation about, we don't act like that. We're not going to act like that in this house. And we're not going to act like that at school. Um, but I need students to advocate for themselves and then report it to an adult. That's a short-term fix. It's like, see something, say something. It's, it's kind of like, uh, the tip line for, you know, guns now in school. Uh, you see something, say something. Um, and that short term can start tomorrow. It's very simple. But the long term is this. It's educating. If students don't know how to read, we teach them how to read. If students don't know how to do math, we teach them how to do math. But if students don't need, don't behave correctly, we provide consequences. It just doesn't make any sense to me. We need to teach students how to behave. You know, busing is an issue. We've, and we've had some dilemmas and challenges in our district. We are, we've put teaching assistants and bus assistants on the buses. We've put videos, cameras, three different cameras on, on the, on the buses. And it really helps to support when there is discipline. Because we can invite the parents in and go, and we can white out all the other faces and say, this is what your child did. And I know you raised your child better than that. And, but this is what they did. Um, and so, then there's the, the support from the parents. Your last part of that question.
Um, how, how would you support student agency and voice?
Mm-hmm. I think there needs to be, teachers, uh, students' input on bullying. What it looks like in school? How is it, how is it, um, who is it between? When is it happening? I think those are critical conversations, but, but more importantly, I think we need to teach students. So, are we using resources to, in our specials class, like in elementary? Are we using, um, a curriculum, like, every two to four weeks? Um, or do we have a student advisory committee, like, having their voice? I'm a firm believer, my superintendent does this, that there is a superintendent student advisory committee that they meet with once a month. It's a lunch and learn. And they listen to their concerns. I would love to have a student advisory committee here in North Hampton with not only high school students, but middle school students and elementary students. Because I think their perspective and their opinions matter. As long as it's framed in a productive, effective manner. It's not going to be a four-hour meeting. It's going to be a 45-minute meeting, and these are the things that we're going to go through. I hope that answered it.
North Hampton has made an initial commitment to fully implementing restorative practices. What is your experience with restorative practices? And how would you go about supporting district-wide implementation as a tool for cultural change?
I love that this question follows the bullying question. Because while we want students to, you know, advocate for themselves, um, and say something when they see something, we also want to value a person to make changes. Value the person's effort to make changes. We want relations to be restored. And I, I commend your, your commitment. As I said, I wear many, many hats in my district. And one of them is that I sit on a student disciplinary hearing authority. And I hear with a panel, uh, students that have zero tolerance, students that are woeful and persistent, students that, um, have bus infractions that have become so severe, um, drugs on campus. And when students come to this panel and we make a decision, our plan and our decisions are always about moving forward and restoring those relationships when students go back to their home school. They may be placed at an alternative school. They may be expelled. But we typically will expel a student and then, um, execute that, that expulsion, expulsion at our, uh, alternative school for a year. When they go back to that school, we have a transition meeting. We have a transition meeting with the administrators. We have a transition meeting with the students, the parents, the staff, on what is that going to look like once you go back to restore your relationship with that school and students?
Thank you. I'm so busy writing. Oh, here we go. This is Community Relationships and Culture. So, can you share some examples of how you've gone about building relationships and healing deeply experienced divides? How have you encouraged positive school district culture that supports diverse groups of students, administrators, staff, and caregivers to join and stay in the district? Specifically, talk about how you have worked collaboratively with the school committee and school community to make this happen.
So, I believe in choice. I believe in parent choice. I believe in school choice. However, I believe North Hampton should be the choice. So, I'm going to give you an example of a division that took place in our school district. We had the first rural charter school application in the state of Tennessee. And as the chief academic officer, it was my responsibility to figure out, what does that application process look like? And what do we do moving forward? Well, in the state of Tennessee, an application is submitted. The school submits what they, what they plan on doing. And then you have a hearing before a panel. School district gets 20 minutes. The charter school gets 20 minutes. What I found out is, the community was deeply divided over this. They were deeply divided because some thought, ah, this charter school is bringing A, B, and C. Well, what the charter school was doing is misrepresenting the facts and distorting the facts of academics and the priorities and the programs, and who they would accept and who they would not accept. And so, we had six weeks to prepare a defense to the panel on why we didn't think a charter school should be implemented in Chatham County. And quite honestly, I practiced for three weeks. I kind of felt like Aaron Brockovich. Like, I got one shot at this, 20 minutes long, and I, I, I did not get to hear their statement. It was just, I had to provide our statement. And so, I was easily able to say why Chatham County schools were better. But in North Hampton, I realized that there's a lot of alternatives to schools. I, I, I gathered that today. Private schools for religious reasons and charter schools for other reasons. But if I'm the superintendent and you choose me for North Hampton, I want North Hampton to be the choice. And so, we got to tell our story. We need to tell our story, or somebody else is going to tell our story. And I don't want that to happen. So, um, I just want to know why, why people are choosing charter schools or why people are choosing religious schools. I mean, instead of North Hampton schools.
So, uh, this question is on special education. Uh, what is your experience with the inclusion model? And how have your previous decisions and actions demonstrated support of special education administrators in develop, delivering robust and dynamic programming that engages learners of all abilities? Models consistent expectations, ensures compliance with laws and regulations, and balances special education expenditures against both available revenues and district goals?
So, do you remember that cartoon? Have you all seen that cartoon where the kids are standing outside the school? And they're all standing in the snow? And there's somebody shoveling the steps, and there's a ramp right next to it? And the person shoveling the steps, it's supposed to be comical, but it's not. The person shoveling the steps says to the kids, and there happens to be a kid in a wheelchair, says, just give me a second. Let me shovel the steps, and then you can enter the building. And says to the person in the wheelchair, hey, just hang on one second. As soon as I'm done shoveling the steps, I'll get to yours. The big picture is, had the person just shoveled the ramp, everybody could have got in the building. And that was not the case. And I think, when we talk about inclusion, we need to talk about access points. Like, where are students coming to us at? I am very familiar with teaching the inclusion model. I am very familiar with being an administrator for inclusion students. But I will tell you, from a classroom teacher perspective, I had a folder on my desk that I knew every single student and every single accommodation or modification that that teach, that student needed. I had an inclusion teacher that would come in my classroom. And she would almost be like a visitor in my classroom. But it was supposed to be a co-teaching model. But that was not the case. And, and it wasn't the case for a lot of reasons. It wasn't set up for success. So, we had that crash and burn for a couple of years, me as a math teacher. And then I said, you know, why can't we plan together? Why can't we have time together to plan so that I can empower her to teach some of the concepts of the lesson? And I can go around monitoring student progress and giving academic feedback. So, we changed what that looked like in Dixon Middle School. And we also have changed some ways that we've practiced inclusion in Chatham County to be more of a co-teaching as opposed to, she's going to be in my class just to assist. And that includes having a desk in there so that she is a teacher. She just doesn't, she doesn't act like a visitor. Um, and it also talks about mindset. Um, you know, in, resource used to be a place. Inclusion is a mindset. But we also need to provide the professional learning that, that supports our teachers with those strategies and what our expectations are.
Another question under, it's under special education, but it's a little broader. Um, what is, what's your experience been in implementing social and emotional learning district-wide?
You know, my current role is chief financial and operations officer. I'm very limited on that. Because what comes to me is, every Monday, we have a district leadership team meeting. And during that meeting, we hear from all of the departments and what all their requests are. And, you know, we know students are, are struggling to act appropriately and interacting with each other. What typically comes across my desk is, what can we do financially? Who can we put in place? And so, right now, in the middle of the year, at our elementary schools, we're serving the social, emotional needs of students through our guidance counselors, through that specials rotation. To be honest, middle school and high school, we're more reactionary. We have Dina students. We have graduation coaches that are trying to handle them. We have guidance counselors who are trying to handle students' social, emotional needs. I mean, we're, we're not doing a great job of it right now. We need to hire some probably behaviorists and probably some more social workers. But I'm not sure what that's going to look like. I don't know how to implement that fairly. I would love to know what you guys are doing and what you're doing well. And what you're not doing well. Oh, you can take your time. I'm trying to get you out of here quickly.
This is a, a question about vision. While effective administrators will certainly take time to get to know a community, listen to a wide array of stakeholders, and build a collaborative vision, given what you know today about the North Hampton public schools, what's your vision for a highly engaged district? And how will you go about achieving that vision?
You know, everybody I talked to today wants to be engaged. I've listened to some of your board meetings, or your committee meetings. And, and it is apparent from talking to the union, talking to the paraprofessionals, talking to the administrators, that you all want the same thing for North Hampton. You want somebody who is a strong leader, who is systematic, who can create a vision that everyone is committed to, but communicate consistently to those stakeholders. Whether it is weekly to you, and whether it is every day to the central office, if it's every day to, um, the administrative team. But, you know, as far as going to the stakeholders, we have a thing in Chatham County that's called educate, uh, Leadership Chatham County. And every, every group gets together and they tour, like, one day is government day in November, and one day is education day. And it never fails that we have people that represent Leadership Chatham County. They're arbitrarily selected. They come into our schools and they go, man, I didn't know that program existed. So, again, it's, it's making sure that our stakeholders know kind of what we're offering. And then, if it's not what we're offering, and that we're not telling our story, let's go back to that, those four questions. I really want to ask everyone, what is going well? What traditions or points of pride do you have? What are your next steps? And what supports can the district provide to you? I think if you ask those four questions, they're positive questions. People might be surveyed out. But it's going to give you feedback on what caregivers think, what teachers think. And then you can drive those goals. Develop a timeline, develop action plan that supports that timeline. And then continue to review and revise it as you're moving. Your district improvement plan was developed in 21? With four goals. Mm-hmm. And I would just say, do, does it need to be reviewed? Do, do the expectations need to be reviewed? Also, highly engaged, what are the norms? Like, what do we expect from the finance department? What do we expect from the HR department? What do we expect from student services? We did this little activity in Chatham County, and it was great. Because on the back of my wall in my office, it said, people expect me to respond to an email in 48 hours. Check. People respond, people want to know why I'm saying no or yes. The why behind it. Check. It was feedback. It was principals telling me what they wanted. It was supervisors telling me what they wanted. But I also had the opportunity to tell them what I wanted. So, it was that two-way communication. So, I think to get the community engaged, there needs to be conversations from all of stakeholders, including the students.
My turn again. Um, this is regarding, uh, working with the school committee. Uh, what are your strategies for fostering a positive relationship and communicating with the school committee? How do you understand the superintendent's role in contributing to positive relationships between the school committee and the community? And the school committee and the administrative leadership team? How do you engage school committee members, both incoming and existing, to understand and navigate the balance in relationship and roles between the superintendent and the school committee?
Very short question.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I had to think about this one.
Five questions in one.
I think the very first, uh, goal that I would have would be to sit down individually with every single school committee member. And have a structured time. A 45-minute to an hour time. Be respectful of your time. To know, what are your expectations? What do you expect from me? What do you expect as far as communication? What do you think the goals of the school should be? Um, how do you envision us discussing policy? How do you envision us discussing the budget? So, really sitting down with every single one of you. And then- And then knowing that the communication for me is going to be very consistent. So I'll just say this example. If Member Levy decides to ask me a question, I will shoot an email out to all school committee members and say, the question was posed, da-da-da-da-da, and here is the response. This is the way we handle it, so that everybody's on the same page. I will also, in my mind, if chosen to be superintendent, would send you a weekly update. This is what's coming down the pike across the district and by school. I would also ask from the school committee is that if you hear of an issue, that you please either, one, say you need to contact the principal of that school? Because conflict needs to be fixed at the closest point of contact. For example, if a parent has an issue with a teacher, I'm just saying from the starting point, the parent needs to have that conversation with the teacher. If the parent is not happy with the response, then the parent needs to go to the principal and allow the administrative team to have say. If the parent is not happy with the principal, obviously, it works its way through the course up to the central office. And I am more than willing to hear those concerns. But there's policy and procedures that we're going to follow so that everybody's on the same page. So, weekly updates. And I would also say this. I'm an over-communicator. If I feel like there's an issue brewing at a school or an incident that is going to hit the front page of the paper or the news, I am going to contact you immediately. If I have a concern, the entire board will be notified. If I think we should close schools because of inclement weather, I will notify the schools. Now, that may not be the case. Maybe I don't make those decisions in this district. In our district, you do.
You're muted, Member Goldman.
Still muted. There we are. Okay. Last question is, what questions do you have for us? Member Agnew, how much time do we have now for questions?
15 minutes, actually. In 90 minutes, we're close to 10 o'clock would be our time to be finished.
Thank you.
Plenty of time.
I don't have any questions of the school board, I will, a school committee. I will say this. You know, in doing my research about Northampton, it was exciting. Like, the very first thing I saw on your websites was all your course offerings, especially at the high school level. And especially, some of the things that you were doing with the middle schools, like gardening and yoga and mindfulness and relaxation. And then, some of the courses, like, I'd read one and it'd be great, and then I go, that's the best one. And then I read another one, I go, oh, that's great. So, I said to one of my close friends, I said, you know what? I don't want to be the superintendent. I want to be a student here, because they got some great things going on. I appreciate your time and your commitment to Northampton. I know this has been a long process for you guys. And I think whoever you select to be your next superintendent is fortunate to be here in Northampton.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's been a pleasure.
Long trip.
Long trip.
Thank you for traveling to us.
You're more than welcome.
Have a good time in Aruba.
I know. Got it done quick, right?
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Be well.
Thank you.
No, we haven't, we still need to adjourn, but there's an announcement that...
Well, if there are members of the community still listening, we are going to do a quick survey, even though we're tired of surveys, I hear. There will be a quick survey at the end of our interviews on Thursday evening, so that you can give us feedback about who you think will make the best superintendent for our community. So we'll give you that information at the end of our session on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There's nothing further, no other announcements? Then is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Would you mind just announcing the schedule for the rest of the week?
Oh, yeah. Good point.
So Thursday is the next meeting, which will be like this meeting. It'll be a special, it's our normal time, but it'll be a special meeting for the final two interviews. So that begins also at 6:30. That is a hybrid meeting, but it will be in our usual location, so the community room at JFK or on Zoom. Then, we have a meeting, let me pull up the calendar, get the times right. We then will be meeting on Monday. That is March 27. That is a special school committee meeting for deliberation and hopefully choosing a superintendent. So that is 6:30 Monday, the 27th. And, any location?
On Monday, the 27th, that's on the right side of my head. I think it's going to be JFK. I just talked to Amy Serial this afternoon, and I'll confirm that, but I think it's going to be JFK.
Okay, so we think that will be in JFK, but please check the agenda to verify the location for that. That'll also be hybrid as well, so also on Zoom. Then Wednesday, the 29th, we have a special school committee meeting, which is a fully remote meeting. Will not have an in-person location, and that is to discuss the budget. So that starts at 6:30, and again, that's remote. And that is...
Can I announce that Michelle will be putting out the finalized schedules for the next two candidates tomorrow? If she hasn't already sent you which motion it's not, so that you'll have that for tomorrow.
Kaye, could you hear that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
From Michelle's email. Thank you.
Where is Thursday night's interview?
JFK.
JFK, Thursday?
JFK, Thursday. The two finalists.
Yes, JFK, Thursday.
6:30.
And they'll be meet and greets, so it's Thursday, this Thursday, there will be meet and greets in the library at JFK before the interviews, which start at 6:30 in the community room at JFK.
Okay. And was there already a discussion about submitting scores and weighing questions?
Not really. We discussed, I don't think we landed.
So I'll just hang on to them, and then we'll talk about it on Thursday?
I think so.
Okay, yes.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So motion's been made by Member Robbins. You guys are pointing at each other. Okay. Motion's been made by Member Seraphine Cox, seconded by Member Robbins to adjourn.
Roll call, please.
Member Robbins?
Yes.
Member Gazy?
Yes.
Member Seraphine Cox?
Yes.
Member Stein?
Yes.
Member Green?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Agnew?
Yes.
Member Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Chara?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.